You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Podcast Network. Find all of our shows at wearelibertarians.com. You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Learn more at wearelibertarians.com.
Welcome to the Boss Hogg Liberty Podcast. This is episode number 316 of East Central's favorite podcast. Jeremiah Morrell, Dakota Davis, executive video producer, audio engineer. We loaned him out to the city. Zach Bircham, welcome all of you.
That didn't work out for him well.
Today's episode features Mr. Mike Guffey, who is the sitting city council member representing Ward Number One in Newcastle, Indiana. And then sitting to my left is Mr. John Phillips, who is running as a Republican to represent Ward Number Two against Jeff Hancock in the Newcastle City election that is upcoming in about a month now.
A month from today.
And we're going to be talking to Mike and John. We're going to be talking about all the work that goes into being a city council member. We're going to be getting John's opinions on issues as we go through. If you listen to the first episode of the city council candidates, then you'll have an idea of the issues we're going to be talking about. But we're going to talk about economic growth, infrastructure, community engagement and transparency. And then the goals that he has for the office. We're going to be asking John about if he was king for a day in Newcastle, Indiana, what the number one thing he would do is. So make sure you're thinking about that, John. And then also make sure you stick around till the end of the show to hear his answer.
Syndicate Boss Hogg Liberty.
Oh, good. Go to more, more work. This show is about our lives in rural Indiana. We're here to push your boundaries and make you think as individuals. Sometimes we'll provoke you, all the times we'll make you laugh, but hopefully you'll always learn something new. If you join the Patreon, you get a special bonus edition of the podcast. This week we learned, it's always the vagary that's fun. We learned why or how you might be able to get valet scooter parking. We learned what you can find at the Henry Ford Museum and that Zach has another very, very complicated job.
That's right. Yes. Patreon.com slash Boss Hogg Liberty. That's where you go to support the show on a monetary level every month. That's how we pay the bills around the studio, keep some lights on, the internet running, everything pays the, pays the rent to the Rose City Partners. We appreciate them. You get show notes ahead of time, so you can see and follow along as we're going through the show, what we're going to be asking our candidates and our guests. And then you also get access to a Facebook group that is exclusive to those members only. And that is where we live stream our 20 minute bonus episode. That the guests sit in. The guests also participate in the bonus episode every week. It's not just Jeremiah, me and Zach. So I, I think it's a good deal. It starts at $5 a month and it goes all the way up to $50 a month. And if you donate at $50 a month, you get a shout out at the front of every episode. And those folks are Mr. Christie Avery from all the way in Fort Wayne, Indiana, Mr. Anthony Meyer, who got some really good news this week. And then of course, Mr. Jonathan Phillips.
Andy Moore Buick GMC.
Andy Moore Buick GMC.
Honda.
We've got it all.
You've got them all.
We've got them all.
Use Car Emporium. And you can get to it now in Fishers.
You can.
All right. Pull that mic in a little closer to you.
There we go.
That'll help. Yeah. You'll have to get used to that if you're going to be a city council member talking, talking right into the mic. Shots, shots, shots fired coming from, coming from Councilman Guffey already.
We also have some sponsors for the candidate series, the candidate episodes that we are doing this fall leading up to the election. And those are Wylons Flowers and the Slick Pickle Sanitation. Wylons Flowers, they are the premier flower service for Henry County and surrounding areas. They did both of our weddings.
All of our weddings.
They did, they delivered me some fine gifts and flowers from Miss Nancy Custer when she was on the show. They've, anytime my wife gets flowers, they're from Wylons. They make it super easy. You can go on the website and order your delivery from there. And then the Slick Pickle Sanitation, they are the, the folks you call if you're doing a home renovation, if you're doing a construction project, you need a dumpster out in front of your house, maybe your aunt's a hoarder. So you need to just empty out her home.
It's a very, very specific, very specific need, but I could see it.
It's, it's, you've seen the, the TV show, I'm sure.
Plausible.
So you told me they're available for interventional services.
Yeah, sure.
Zach, I have seen you, you are, of the three regular voices on the show, you are the fastest to order flowers. You are a regular customer of Wylons.
Yeah. Well, I'm always digging myself out of a hole.
Too many podcasts.
I need all the help I can get. Yeah.
All right. So let's, we think, we thank the sponsors very much. It's we, uh, the candidate series, it literally, that's what their sponsorship each, each time we come around to this, it's, it really does help out the show and make the difference. So let's get to know our, our, I guess our sitting councilman and then our prospective councilmen, different wards, but just, just so that everybody knows. Mike and John are not running against each other. They're in different races. Mike got a freebie. So I said, well, if John's going to sit here alone, we may as well bring Mike in because Councilman Dickens was on a couple of weeks ago. And I said, well, everybody's going to get a chance to come through and hopefully they'll take us up on it. And Mike did. So, um, John, let's get to know you a little bit, your background, your bio. And you kind of educate the, the audience as to what makes you say, you know what I want to do? I want to dedicate some Monday nights to the city.
I want to dedicate them all. Well, my name's John Phillips. Uh, I'm originally from Muncie, Indiana. We moved here about 20 years ago to Newcastle to help my wife's grandfather out and run his horse farm for him. Um, I've enjoyed it here. I'm part of the Sheriff's Department on the reserves, been doing that for eight years now and really enjoy it. I really want to get involved with the city. My daughter had a bad accident a little over a year ago and the community was just so great, the way they helped out. Whether it be offering to mow yards, letting dogs out, watch the kids. And I have always wanted to be part of the community, more so than just sitting back and complaining or anything else. I want to be part of it. And I want to have that ear for people in my ward. It doesn't even have to be in my ward, but I've got a cell phone. If you need to get ahold of me, call me if there's questions. Some people are scared to show up at the meetings. You've, you guys have been to the meetings. Not a lot of people show up and some people don't like that spotlight on them. And I want them to be able to come to me and say, hey, here's what I've got going on. Now, will I be able to get everything? No, no one can. But at least present that to the city council, to the mayor, to who it needs to be done or given to, so that way we can make a decision on it. I, I went to Cowan High School, um, went to Ball State a little bit and Ivy Tech a little bit, but I was already in the car business at that time. Like you said earlier, I'm Andy Moore Buick GMC in Fishers. Um, so I did not finish up college, but at that time in my career, that's what I wanted to do. So, um, it wasn't going to further, further me in that business at that time. Married and have two daughters, Morgan and Harper. Harper's sitting over there.
Harper's experiencing the childhood of a political candidate.
She is.
I don't know how many, how many of these events you've drug her to now, but I, this is just the beginning, Harper.
And if anybody knows my wife, I got the eye roll from her. That, that is hereditary. So that does get passed down. But my wife is a charge nurse at the Henry Community Health, has been doing that for about 17 years now. Another thing, another, going to put this out there, we are dancing for Dancing for Diamonds for the Purvis Foundation to raise money for the girls softball league. Sorry, it's a plug, but Rachel and I will be dancing and there's quite a few other couples on October 21st.
Cool.
So that'll be exciting.
All right. And Mike, it's four years ago, you were in here and we, we had this conversation and it was a much higher stakes situation at the time. Now you're just, you're an automatic relic, but tell folks about yourself. Let's, let's, let's remember who Mike is.
Well, Mike Guffey, lived in Ward One for 42 years. I work at Intap Precision, been there going on 26 years, take care of the quality at all the Toyota NAMC plants in North America. Been traveled quite around, but like John, you know, uh, when you talk about being a ward, it's more than just that ward. It's totally Newcastle, really, you know, I mean, I'm a city councilman. It's for Newcastle, not just Ward One. But like he said, the phone, man, that's, that's where I get a lot of it because he's already mentioned it. People don't like to show up at council meetings for some reason, but I always let everybody know that the phone is always open and they can call me. Text, email, whatever they need to do.
All right. Um, so what, what made you say, you know, I'm going to do this again. You were a first time candidate four years ago and you said, I'm going to sign up again.
Right. I think it's just, uh, just being able to help the community, you know, I thought, I thought about it when, when it came down to the third year, it was like, you know, do I want to go again? But yeah, then I thought I wanted to go again, you know, and if I had someone running against me, great. I think that's healthy to me. That's a healthy.
Give people a choice.
Gives people a choice. It gets people involved, but I think there's a lot more out there to do. You know, I, I feel like we can help the city. We just, we got to get everybody lassoed together to do that. So I just want to, I want to come back and just see what I can do, just be a help of it.
All right. And then for you, John, you're, you're, I guess it was the, the community influence last year and trying to give back.
That helped a lot. Yeah, that helped a lot. I've been approached before to run. Um, and I, the last time I declined because it wasn't the right time. I did a lot of thinking. I think I was approached in October and I said, I'll tell you what, I'll let you know in December. You can't file until January anyways. But I took a couple of months to seriously think about it. Is that something, is my servant's heart ready to take on that? And we thought about it, talked it over with my wife. She wasn't on board at first because I'm pretty busy and she's like, how are you going to have time? I was like, well, make time. If, if there's a need and it's something you want to do, you're going to figure out and make time. So it's, it's one of those things. I was raised with a servant's heart with my family. It's, I love to do for others. When it comes to doing stuff for me, I don't like it because I feel bad, but it's something that's just, it's weight heavy on my heart and, and decided to give it a shot.
So let's get into the issues here. Uh, the first one is economic growth and small businesses. We want to talk a little bit about the role of the council, especially in your view about how the city council and the city in general can support small businesses and support the growth of businesses in the community.
And that's something, and even with this election, I chose to stay local. Um, all my signs were done by Murgison's. Anything I do, I tried to keep local here to keep money. I could, could, could I've got them somewhere else? Yes. But I'm trying to keep everything local in town. Um, it's something that as a city council, if we take care of our city, we make sure the budget's in ti- in, is tight and we're not showing a debt, we're going to draw more businesses in. If there's anything for the businesses that need help in, um, they can come to us and we can look at helping them out. But the big thing is, is making sure the city is prepared and gives the businesses a place to, I guess a good city to back them is I guess what I'm trying to say. If, if you're in a bad area and your city's bad, people aren't going to come to your place. Now you might have the few local people, but you're not, we've got to bring people from other cities, whether they drive from Muncie, whether they drive from Anderson and bring them to us and.
Talking about the workforce and also, and also employers.
Most definitely. Main Street's been great. Main Street is beautiful. We've got a few buildings we're still working on or they're still working on. I say we. But that's going to attract businesses in. And just like you said, with competition in your election, competition's going to drive business for everybody as well. If you give choices, people are going to shop. People are going to spend more time rather than come to one place and walk away because there's nothing else there. But I think we need to extend the city beyond just Main Street. I think there's areas we can increase on, on three. A lot of people in my ward, they don't feel like they're part of the city because it ends at three. People west side of three think we're city? A lot of them doesn't know a city election's going on. We've got an election this year. Um, so we need to.
It has felt like the biggest, the biggest, uh, even though you have a very competitive election, it's been a, it's been a surprise.
It has been.
I don't feel like you've had the community chatter about, about it as much as I would have expected this year.
And, and I was expecting more of that myself, but my, my goal, and it's kind of off the infrastructure and helping businesses out. But I think if we bring the city as a whole, all sides, all corners, and not just downtown, but naturally people think city is downtown. Bring them and then get them involved with more stuff. I think that's going to help and that's going to entice more small businesses as well. I guess it is not just downtown. I don't have to have my business on Main Street, which we love them to be there because that's drawing business. But I can put a small business on State Road Three and still have the backing of the city.
And it's not just a, yeah, a place for franchises.
Exactly. Not just a place. I would love to see a nice mom and pop restaurant. Um, you know, we, we lost Montgomery's, which was not city, but we lost a, a good steakhouse and we don't have that. I think honestly, I think mom and pop restaurants would do better here than some of your franchises. Because Newcastle has a great sense of community. And I think people will support, uh, people that own businesses within the city.
We've talked about it before, Cafe Royale beat out Starbucks back in the day.
Oh yeah. Cafe Royale is a perfect example of that.
Yeah, it's been successful and pretty well at a Henry County institution at this point. So Mike, same, same thing on, on, on small businesses and economic development. What, how do, how do you view the city council being involved?
Well, I, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm just like John. I say it many times at city council. I've, I've told it to the mayor many times. Newcastle's not just Broad Street.
Yep.
It's not just downtown, although I like how it's looking. It is looking good. It's looking great. But we got encompassed the whole town because we got, we could be on Road Three, we could, different areas, different areas. And I, and John's really hit the nail on the head. I feel the same way about that. It's just, I think that's how you can, not everybody is going to have that opportunity to go downtown.
Right.
So you got to open it up at other places. So you got to, you, you, you gotta have that opportunity there for these people to come.
Do you have examples of ways the city's been able to help out, say, economic development in the last four years since you've been on the council?
Well, we've gave, we've gave quite a bit of money to, uh, Main Street, which is, which is help, but it's downtown.
Yep.
It's downtown and I understand. And, and I don't have a problem giving, helping out with downtown, but I, I want to see the building, something happen to them now.
Yep.
You know, we've done that facade. We've got that front of that building looking good. They did. We gave money to it. But it would be good now to see somebody move in those buildings. That's, that's the goal. And hopefully we'll get there and I, I think we will. But we got to get somebody in those buildings and that way, you know.
That's, that's a big key. It's just like never judge a book by its cover. We've got to have, we've got the facade. You might look great, but until something's on the inside, it's not going to draw.
Exactly.
The interest of people. That was the, uh, the other question under the economic growth portion was attracting new industries and more businesses and job opportunities in the city. You touched on it a little bit whenever we talked about, you talked about, um, just basically making Newcastle look more appealing.
Yeah.
Making it the curb appeal nicer. Is there anything else that, that the city has an impact on there as far as bringing jobs in? And I, I mean, I know we have the, the RDC and the EDC.
I think the RDC and the EDC is the, is the guts of that to get people in there. I would like to, I've never attended an RDC meeting or an EDC meeting.
Yeah.
And I need to, but unfortunately you got to work and they have those meetings during the daytime. But, but anyway, I feel like that's their job to get to, you know, get companies to come in or businesses to come in. And I don't know what they do to do that. I'd like to know, you know, I'd like to know a little bit more about that on, on my side. But I believe that the RDC and the EDC is where we can actually, we can gain.
You agree, John? Like.
I, I agree. And I, and I don't know how much the city council, not being in that position first time in politics completely. I think the city, if there's a way to maybe do training for workforce development, um, one thing I have seen is some of these new businesses come in and we're not being able to supply the workforce for them. Um, so I don't know if there's a way, I, the high school has done great with their different programs through the career center and stuff like that's been great. Um, but if there's something out there to help young kids to do a workforce development, um, and it doesn't have to be anything basic, but just something like that. And I don't know how much of a city council, if that's something they can look, look into, uh, or to help out, or maybe start doing some internships with, with city officials or city, uh, the, um, the water treatment plant, doing some kind of internship with them to maybe start, um, these kids these days, they graduate and they go, they can't just go do a nine to five job anymore. It kind of, it's culture shock. And maybe if we can start doing maybe an internship where they work for three, four, or five hours a day or something to start to get them in that situation. And learn a little bit of, uh, uh, I don't know where I'm trying to go here.
It's like the behaviors of, of, of a workplace, right?
Yeah.
You kind of learn the norms.
Yeah. I, I mean, I remember when I was younger, when I was 13, 14, I wanted a job. I wanted to work like my dad. I wanted to make money. And it seems like we're not getting that today. Could be completely off base, but it's something maybe if the city looks into, maybe it's not the city council or maybe the city council couldn't at least start it.
Start a conversation.
Plant the seed and then we get it watered somewhere else.
So you guys have both talked about downtown and State Road Three needing some love. We've been talking on the show for the last few months that State Road Three does have some love coming to it, uh, from, from Indy.
Tomorrow is the meeting for that.
So there's a meeting tomorrow night at, at Bundy where the, the state's going to roll out a plan. Uh, it sounds like it is going to try to, it, the Jerry Walden conversation, he was talking about how he was able to work in some pedestrian walkways into that corridor so that maybe the downtown area is, is, you know, walkable and then those businesses down, down the hill, maybe can pick up some of that foot traffic as well. Does, I guess, are you guys supportive of that, of that project and what, what will come of it?
It's going to happen no matter what because it's a state, it's a state thing. Um, I've been to Greenfield a couple of times and, and I've said a few words underneath my breath when I want to turn left out of McDonald's or, or anywhere else. It's something we're going to have to, to, um, learn to deal with, to be honest. Um, we are going to have to come up with some things to try to figure out with businesses and stuff like that. They keep saying they're doing this to, to lack, uh, or to, to slow down side impact accidents. Well, if you're doing a U-turn, you still have that same chance of a side impact accident. It's going to cause some issues for the EMS department, for the police department and stuff like that, uh, to have to go another block down the road to turn around because an accident's on the northbound side of a, of a, um, road. Um, so it's something that, that there needs to be some talk and some plans in place, but it's something that we have to get the plans in place before it starts. That way we're not behind the eight ball.
Right.
Personally, I'm okay with the way the road is right now, but, uh, that's, that's a state issue. It's not anything I can control.
That's like Greenfield, they at least have the ability through most of the shopping centers and stuff. It's really large. You can pass through on both sides of the road and here.
It's what those shopkeepers want is to be the alternate surface, the, the.
It's the way it's going to turn out though, is people cutting through.
You find people driving on their private road.
I mean, how many people's turned off 38 and cut through Aldi's and all that stuff to come back out to Indiana? It happens, especially when the bridge was out.
Yeah. You kind of have it on the, on the west side, but on the, the east side, it butts right up to the downtown of Newcastle. And there is no way to pass through any of those businesses. It's, it's not, I don't know. It's just not the same. We're not Greenfield.
No, but I will tell you this though, and sorry to interrupt you. If you are going to cut through, if you're going to put a business now downtown, now's the time because people will be cutting through that way and going down 38. So now's a good time if you're starting a business to look into one of the buildings downtown.
38 and 103 are getting ready to get a heck of a lot more traffic.
Yes, they are.
Mike, tell us, tell us what the sitting councilman says about this sort of thing.
First of all, when I heard all about it, I traveled to Michigan quite often and they have the, I call, they call it the Michigan left-hand turn. They're not fun. It's a state job. State's going to do it no matter what. You work for the state, right?
I'm a vendor to the state.
Vendor to the state, but you still, you understand what the state can do and what they will do.
Rob Kendall calls them a mafia, I believe.
Here, Rob. No bridge. I'll work for you on State Road Three.
But I, I like it the way it is now too. But I think we'll, I think we'll, we'll, I mean, we'll come, we'll get over the growing pains with it.
We will.
And maybe, hopefully in the end it'll be, it'll be what we want.
You guys, you guys have all grown up turning left across three lanes of traffic into a turn lane to hope to not get rear ended.
But we do it very well.
We do. I mean, we're great. But in my opinion though, if you're turning left across three lanes and doing a U-turn, well, now your side impact just turned into a rear ending because you were going too slow for the person coming up on you. It's still going to be a, a we still. Traffic nightmare.
Nothing against anybody, but we still have people that do not know how to operate a vehicle on Road Three anyway.
Especially right here.
The turn lanes.
State Road 38.
The turn lane?
Yeah.
Well, to be honest, Mike, the, the lane striping, it's a, it's a guess as to what it looked like 15 years ago.
Let's be honest, you know, like I don't know many of us knows this, but you roll into town from the north on three and you get to 38. And it was so much easier back in the day when the plates were a literal 33, whatever, because you had to look, see who was local because there's a lane shift as you cross 38.
If you're in the left lane, you can get cleaned out.
And if it's like, you know, the horse show just got out and it's a bunch of out of towners, you're like, you have to be prepared to be driven up onto like the median coming into Kroger because they don't know the lane shifts because the, as quickly as they can build a bridge, they'll re-stripe the road and they, which means they don't want to re-stripe the road. So my success with Michigan left is they built one in Indy that I recall that's common. And it was Allisonville and.
86th Street.
96th Street or whatever. And they built it like, oh, this is amazing. And then they stopped building them because nobody liked it. It's like, it's not a great concept. So nobody likes to drive too far.
I'm all in for a super elevated State Road Three, five miles through town, just, just, it's a skyway. And then, and then the old State Road Three is a local road down below. That's, that's why I'm, I'm in for that.
A hybrid of what they did on 37.
Yeah. Just a full, a full, full, yeah. And then diverging diamond interchanges.
Can you, diverging diamond?
In the sky.
You mean just a head on, every day you just check the scanners pages and it'd be like head on accident, diverging diamonds. It's just like, oh gosh, there's another one.
All right. So back to the serious side of this though. So roads are one thing, but I think we talked about this on the, on the previous council edition. We have sewer lines that get replaced. We've got gas lines that are getting, that are tearing up the town. You've got water that happened, you know, water lines that as soon as you pave a road, that's when the water line decides to pop. And Mike, I'm going to start with you because you have four years of experience now. Is there any influence the city council has on how any of that infrastructure works and gets planned and how it affects our lives?
All we can do is keep plugging because it's horrible. Our sewer system, our water system, it's ancient. Man, these, these lines are, I mean, you, when we experienced what happened down here and we flooded Kroger out, we didn't even know where to turn the water off at.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, yeah, or the infrastructure is huge to me. To get business.
You have to have the infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Yep.
If you don't have infrastructure, you're not going to get none of that.
So the city's been getting, for the last six years or so, we've had a storm separation project coming through, which helps not overload your water treatment plant. But that isn't new sewer lines.
No.
That is, this is where the.
Stormwater sewer separation.
So the rainwater goes directly to the creek and doesn't go into the sewage plant. So we haven't solved a sewer problem yet.
No, we haven't solved the sewer problem.
Is that in our conversation, like we've heard from Councilman Dickens saying, there's a big water treatment plant project that needs to happen at some point that needs to get paid for and dealt with.
Yes.
You get a whole lot of water lines that need to be dealt with.
Yes.
And then you do all that, then you need to repave the roads again.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
All right. So we've, we've got a list of grievances. We have, we have a plan.
But like I said, the infrastructure, man, you got to have it. You, you have to, you mean, you know, you're not, you're just not going to get no businesses. I mean, we've got, we've got some housing that's coming in and that's great because we need housing. But it still gives you a little concern on the water and sewage.
I think they did put a big, didn't they put a newer sewer main to feed the industrial park in the last couple of years?
So there, there's a new sewer.
Industrial park.
South of town.
One towards.
The one that, yeah, under, under, the one under like Spiceland Pike, was that the work they were doing under Spiceland Pike was they were putting in a new, a new sewer? Like they put in a bigger sewer main. I think, I might be wrong on that.
There definitely were new, new lines.
There was some work that was supposed to be done to help set up the industrial park to be able to handle more than it's currently got.
Any more infrastructure talk from John?
I've got to do some more studying on infrastructure. I know it needs to be done and we Band-Aid a lot. The, the guys that are, that work, um, for our water department or, or, uh, water treatment and sewage, they do a great job, but they can only do so much with what's handed to them.
Exactly.
Um, that, that, that's something I don't want to speak on because I don't want to speak wrong and I don't know enough about it at this time. Cause that's a high dollar project that grants are going to have to be sought after, um, and all that stuff. Cause that's a high dollar project that grants are gonna have to be, uh, sought after, um, and all that stuff.
That's where a lot of, I think a lot of communities end up going to Okra, the Office of Community World Development and hoping that you get the, you get the winning lottery number.
Yeah.
Uh, where your town is the one that gets paid for. Um, watching, watching the live chat here tonight, Chris State and former producer, he gets, uh. At, to ask questions as he wants to. Uh, he is, he's reminding us that he had, he ran for city council four years ago, got married. Uh, and then he moved out of town because he says he couldn't find affordable housing in the community.
It's funny that he brings that up because Rachel and I were just talking about that tonight. Um, we were talking about some of the blighted houses and. And a way to maybe tear down those houses and build affordable housing. And it, it's, it's funny because we discussed it and. What is affordable housing? What payment does that start at? And, and it, it could be a, a broad range. What you think's affordable might be different than me and so forth like that. So it's really hard to say, but we need to be able to get housing in there that fits. The citizens of Newcastle's pocketbooks, their budgets. Um, yes, we want to bring in from people from out of town and stuff too, but we've got to take care of our own first. And without doing that. You're not gonna have any growth. Um, but these blighted houses is their way to renovate them, uh, to make it affordable housing. But you also want them to have them nice enough that people want to move in.
Right.
Um, you don't want them thrown together or, or anything like that. So it's something that needs to be looked at. There's housing in Newcastle. But once again, just like we stated with the infrastructure, if we build more affordable housing neighborhoods and so forth like that, we've got to have the infrastructure to service them with water, sewage. Uh, and all that stuff. Um.
Yeah. I've wondered about that with the blighted houses. I, I did building trades, um, whenever I was in high school. And I've wondered if it, if it, uh, would be even possible for the city to, you know, have building trade kids come in to a house that's. You know, really dilapidated on Zach's list of bad houses on the land bank committee and, uh. Renovating it or building a new house on the lot and then the city having ownership of that.
I think that the, I've been around, I've been on the land bank for about a year. And I think, do you think that if like Habitat Free Manny comes in contact and gets with us and says, hey, here's a lot we want, I think we typically sell it to him for like a dollar. And just like, here you go.
Building trades has done a few of those.
And so, um, and we're hoping to get some of the blighted houses. And we just, Jerry just mentioned the city council meeting last night that we've got. Uh, some money in the bank, like about $57,000 and contributing that to getting some of the blighted houses demolished. Um, the biggest holdup of that is the process, just like the legal process, because, um, it takes time to, um, get ahold of houses. Um, but like we have a bunch of properties and we have a couple of houses, one down the street from me that were in the process of like, um, if it's a house and it's worth something. Then it's got a rotation amongst the local realtors and the realtors will get a crack at it, at selling it. And then, um. In that case, we try to get some kind of version of market value. If it's just an empty lot, our typical law based price for an empty lot is like 1,500 bucks. You just have to keep the taxes up and then, um, maintain it. And so if somebody wants to build a house on a lot, we have it, we'll sell it to them.
And there's, I'm still watching the chat here. Chris State talks about the interest rate too, and that's a, the city council can't do anything about that, but. You know, in the last five years, you've gone from having a four, three and a half, four percent rate to a seven or eight percent interest rate. And it becomes a whole lot harder for. For your middle income or any income to go buy a house when your interest rate double.
I think the issue with housing in Newcastle has been that we have a whole bunch. And this has changed in the last three years. Obviously since COVID, housing prices have kind of gone crazy. But we had a chunk of houses that were like under a hundred thousand dollars, like little starter houses that might not be in the greatest shape, whatever. And then I think it jumped from like a hundred to like 250. And there was this huge donut hole of houses that were in like the hundred to 250. And like Chris mentioned, there's the neighborhood going in behind the Y. I think those houses are 300 plus.
Yeah.
Um, for a lot of people, I would love to know like inflation adjusted, the, I bet the average income in Newcastle has probably gone down. If inflation, because of Chrysler not being around when I was a kid, those people were making great money in the nineties. They'd be good money now. And it was the nineties. So I think that's the issue is like trying to get those houses that are in that wheelhouse of a dual income family that they big enough that they want. And they, they can afford, but it's not, it's not like a Fisher's caramel house or whatever. It's like a, just a decent, like two to three bedroom house in Newcastle.
We need the hundred to a hundred fifty, a hundred and seventy-five maybe that, and that's an issue that city council can affect. Inflation's outpaced people's incomes greatly. Um, but you're exactly right. The, the housing market i- is just skyrocketed. There's probably 10 people for every one home. And only seven of, or, you know, three out of the 10, that home actually fits their budget or so forth like that.
Yeah. We're watching the chat. This is a very top popular topic. Ron Milford up in, he's in Warsaw. He says a thousand a month is, you're maybe gonna get an apartment. Uh, so. On a scale, it doesn't, it, when we think of what housing was five years ago, 10 years ago versus now. It, I don't think we still process mentally what costs are now and that you think it's insane here, but we're still one of the more affordable communities.
Yes.
When Rachel and I were discussing, we were talking about, you know, can, can a developer go in there? And, and I said, the problem is with the cost of housing, they build a new house. They're gonna want $1,500 a month.
Yep.
For rent. And that's not gonna be considered affordable housing in the city of Newcastle. I'm thinking that seven fifty range might be on the high end. I could be wrong, but. You know, that's.
Well, I look at the rent of some houses now, you know, if you just look around, it's like, God, how in the world, here in Newcastle.
Yeah.
And with, and with the blight condition.
Yeah.
We, I, I'm glad that we're taking down these, you know, I would like to see in the budget. I'd like to see them budget five, six, seven houses a year to demolish. And it does take a long time to get it to come down.
Yeah.
It's the court system you do gotta go through. That was one of the things that I asked for on some of the ARP money.
Yeah.
Is to be spent on blight. And we did, we, we tucked some money and set it aside and have used it to blight. And we've tucked down, we've tucked down several, but. It just, it, it takes a while to get that down.
It does. And it goes back to the growth of, of Newcastle. There could be a home that fits your budget perfect. There's a blighted house next to it and.
And you say, I don't.
I don't, I.
Exactly.
They don't want to buy it, especially with the prices of houses these days.
Well, and it's, Newcastle's history is, is unique where, you know, Chrysler and, and there were so much development in the forties and fifties and sixties here.
Booming.
Where the houses of the time that were built don't necessarily match what you see on HGTV today. Right? You've got a two or three bedroom, one bath house, ranch, and we've got them everywhere. But now you want four bedrooms, two and a half, three baths and, you know, that just, you don't want a 1,300 square foot house. A lot of folks want a 2,800 square foot house.
Yeah.
Uh, and you just don't have that inventory. So when those come up, it's, it's, it's a food trough.
And I feel like that we're, we're, we're heading in a good direction.
Yeah. Oh, most definitely.
Been huge.
Land bank's great. Land bank's great.
Job. Doing a great job. You know, I was really surprised last night when I heard that number, 57,000 is what they got banked. That's awesome. So I, I do believe that we are heading in the right direction. It's just like the inflation and all that. There's no way this city council has any control over it. It's, it's just what it is.
Jeremiah has mentioned that this has been a hot topic. Uh, he's gotten a lot of, we've gotten a lot of input on this. And speaking of input. Uh, community engagement as you're in the city council, as you're running for city council both. Keeping your residents in the discussion and, and the, and communicating with them about decisions that are happening. You know, we, we see different strategies, uh, from different elected officials. If they, like. Tom Saunders was always, uh, for me is the, was always the shining example of an elected representative. Because it was, you have, you had a problem that needed to be done at the state house. And then Tom would talk to you about it and he would bring it up. We brought up the issue of straight ticket voting and then immediately he was bringing it up at the state house.
Didn't tell us he did it, but he filed a bill to deal with it.
Didn't even tell us. He just did it because he's like, oh, that's what my constituents want, you know?
And that's the key is listening to the constituents. A, the first thing I've got to do if elected is make sure everybody in my ward knows who I am. Um, I, I would say you could go to 60% of the people and ask who your city council person is and they couldn't tell you.
You're right.
They might be able to tell you one person and it might not even be theirs, but you're, you're.
It's Greg Pence, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's Greg Pence. It's great. But your, your constituents, your, your fellow citizens. They've got to know who you are. They've got to know how you get, uh, to get ahold of you. Um, it's something that I thought about is. Once a month, have a town hall meeting with just Ward two. That way if they're, they don't want to go up here or they've got to work, they can meet with me. And we can go over what the issues are. We can discuss it. That's the thing is you've got to listen. I was told years ago, you got two ears and one mouth. Listen twice as much you talk. And you, you've got to have that philosophy, even if it's something that you don't agree with. If majority of your people want it done, you've got to at least present it. But you've got to listen and you've got to be able to have that phone, have that text, have that email, have that town hall meeting. You might get one or two people that come to it, but you know what? Those one or two people are just as important as everybody else. And you've got to listen to them. So i- in my opinion, I've thought about it. Maybe have a town hall meeting, make sure, um, that we've got contacts for our people.
I'm picturing, I'm picturing John renting Bundy auditorium.
For two people.
And then you realize this could have been a Jack's Donuts meeting.
No, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, back when I was a kid, I knew Tom Saunders would just have like a side room. And like Stacks, sounds like they have the perfect side room for this. And he's like, hey, I'm gonna be at Stacks or I'm gonna be at, it was Max Steak House back, um, by the old Walmart. And he's like, I'm gonna be there or whatever day. And he'd just eat a slow breakfast and people just came in and he was just, he's like, I'm just hanging out here. And my, my parents would go and there'd be people hanging around, talking to them, whatever. But it was just like, like office hours, but at a local restaurant. And so people could just come talk to him about what their concerns were. And he would just do that, you know, like once a month or every couple of months, whenever he could do it. So I remember. So that's possible. Like I said, Stacks has a perfect room. They have room off to the right that's got a big long table and you just kind of hold court in there and people could come in and voice concerns.
It's pretty ironic bringing up Tom Saunders. He was at discussion today at work. And, uh, Tom was a people person. He really was, you know, like him or not like him. He was a people person because he, he, he would talk, it didn't matter what party you were in or whatever, Tom would, he'd talk and he'd listen to you. He might not get what you want, but he would listen to you.
Yeah.
He would listen to you. He was a subject today at work.
On this podcast about someone who sent him a nasty letter or nasty email. And he was like, hmm, I think I know that name. Yeah. They live, they don't live too far from me. So he just stopped by their house on the way home from the state house. It was like. Hey, Tom, uh, you sent me this letter. I just wanted to talk about this word.
And they were, and they were like, what is going on?
But I guarantee that went a long way with them.
Yes. Well, that and a lot of people are gonna be a lot more reasonable and face to face is worse. Like, you know, when I, the story, like back when they were doing these town hall, there was not social media. This is like, honestly, pre-internet. So you have a lot of keyboard cowboys and they'll say stuff online that sometimes there's, or at a public forum, I've heard stuff at a public meeting last night that was like, I have no idea where it came from. But if you sit down and talk to them, then all of a sudden you'll get an actual conversation with what they actually think without all like the sensational stuff that they're on the internet.
So Mike. And it's like, you know, you, that's why I say it's just not Ward one. I'm a city council, city council wide. Anybody can call me or do whatever. I, you know, who cares about the attaboy?
Yeah.
I don't care about the attaboy. It's, you know.
Yep.
I'm elected to do a job and that is to serve Newcastle.
I bug Aaron Dickinson. He's not my city councilman. He's who I bug.
And Mark Coker appreciates it.
But we're a voice, we're a voice for these people. And that's, that's what we are. And we need to make sure what they're asking for or.
I have people call me quite often and they say, are you my councilman? Where, where do you live? They tell me, no, I'm not your councilman, but it doesn't matter.
Yep. Doesn't matter. I've got an ear to listen. Bend it.
Exactly.
Yep.
So Mike, let's talk about your main goals for the next four years, um, assuming you beat the blank spot on the ballot this time. Um, is there anything you think that you want to work on quickly and, and say, hey, this is a low hanging fruit. We can get this January or. It, you know, what's your, what are your priorities for the next four?
Well, my next four years is to continue to plug for Ward one because that's who I represent. And, uh, I've had a lot of roads that's been paved in my ward. A lot of them is.
Do you guys arm wrestle to decide if you get roads in your ward paved or houses that go down?
You know, they, 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 they did tell us, give us a list for next year. So I turned in a wish list. Every road in my ward that's not been paved, I turned it in. I know that's a wish list. And I told them that. I told them that. That's a wish list, but. I've had a lot of them that's been paved and some of them is because of the stormwater sewer separation, which was state mandated. So the road had to be paved anyway. So it really wasn't anything that. We set a monies aside or any grants or anything like that. But we did get the community crossing grant and there've been some other roads paved, but I'd like to see the rest of my roads in Ward one paved. But, uh, the other thing is, is I, I have a little beef with receiving. The minutes or, I mean, not the minutes, but the agenda for council.
Yeah.
And I get it on a Friday and I'm gonna vote on something on Monday.
It's not a lot of time.
I don't like that. And I, I've said it. I really haven't been real verbal about it, but. I'd like to see that change. And honestly, whoever wins on the clerk treasure side. When it comes to budget time, get that book to us as quick as you can get that book to us and not be scrambling to get it. And then vote on a Monday.
Yep.
It's not good. It's not good. I don't like that. So I hope that's what changes.
Yeah. It's definitely something that needs to be looked into. You've got to be able to study that. Yeah. You've got last year's budget to look at, but stuff has changed so much over the year.
It's not the funniest sections that you're just buzzing through.
It's not, not at all. And that's, there needs to be more discussion with it overall. Um, yeah, you don't have a hearing kind of like the county does, but there's a discussion. If it takes three or four meetings and to have a true, honest discussion about what's being spent where. Now, a lot of people don't know. City council does not do the budget. And thi- this is for anybody watching or anything. City council does not do the budget. The only thing we do is approve it, say yes or no. And I say we, if elected, um, but the budget's all done by the mayor. Um, we can take away, but can't add to, is that correct? Or we can do it. We can ask for stuff to be amended, but the only thing that we do is approve it. And a lot of people out there think that we are in control of the budget.
And we're not.
As a city council person, we are not.
We're not.
We just say yes or no. And if it's voted down, you, you revert back to last year's budget. And then sometimes that could be bad.
Yeah. Cause you don't want to lose money.
No, you don't want to lose money.
Don't want to lose monies and go backwards. But. That's where a lot of people in town do not understand.
Right.
You know, they, they bring this budget before the council and they want my blessing.
Yep.
Can you table it for next meeting?
We tabled the.
Yeah.
The meeting for last.
We tabled it because I think they was just, we had a couple of councilmen that were out.
Yeah.
But also I, I felt like there was some things in there that we needed to look, take a little longer to look at.
How, how many years or cycles does it take to get comfortable? I imagine day one, you're drinking from a fire hose. How long, how long does it take to get comfortable in a role?
I didn't really get comfortable to where I really felt like I could speak out and say what I really wanted to say until about my third year. But, you know, I had a lot of that through COVID and we did a lot of that. Zoom and all that. But.
Yeah. That would have been a weird first.
I've been miserable.
But, um, I've got comfortable and, uh. You know, it, that probably depends on the individual. John might get it quicker. Who knows, you know? But, uh, I do know that I have a voice just like they do. So if they don't like what I say, then, you know, that's fine. I can continue to say.
Very good. King for a day. You can change one thing. You, you get, we've been talking about budget, but you, you get to decide ordinances, right? Like that's, that's a big part of, 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 of the city is that you, you're the king for the day. You can set an ordinance, you can make changes. What, what would John Phillips do if you didn't have to, you know, get six other people to say yes and a mayor to agree, et cetera, et cetera?
Get everybody on the same page to make Newcastle better. I've looked at ordinances and there's some that are outdated, some that need to be changed. Um, my number one goal, if I could be mayor for the day. Would be able to get our budget back in line. If there's deficits in accounts, figure out a way to get deficits done. There's been talk about deficits and insurance and EMS billing and all that stuff. Do I know why? No. I would like to be able to find out why, what the issues were and get that handled. That's my goal in that first four years. Is there gonna be hard choices that's gonna have to be made? Probably. Is there stuff that's gonna have to change? Yes. Are there gonna people that are people that don't like us for making these changes? Probably. But we, we need to figure out this, um, with the deficits.
All right. And, and for. All right. And and for Mike, Chris Guthie wants backyard chickens and he says it looks bad.
He's giving me a hard time. I can see that on that. I love you, Chris. That's no lie.
I moved out to Spice Islands, got chickens.
Chris, if you were in my ward, I would approach.
Chickens in the city of Newcastle. But no, um, I'm 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 kind of like the same as John. I'd like that. But also the the other big thing I think is, and I think last night we, we heard a little bit about how. We're moving in the right direction on on all the ordinance, getting everything where where it's not so complicated. And you know, you don't have no problem. If you've been on the city.
That's horrible.
Web page, don't even get on it. Sorry. You know, it's 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 tough.
I will change mine. The city webpage. City webpage, two things. The city webpage, if you go on and try to look stuff up, there's stuff, first thing that shows up is from two thousand twelve and thirteen.
Yes.
And another thing, thanks to Mr. Bircham and and Aaron doing their um, videoing of the city council meetings. I think that there needs to be a link or something easier to find them. You just go to the city page, click on view and you can watch it right there.
I got, what did I get asked about one? Oh, the parking ordinance. I got asked about a parking ordinance through Jeremiah a couple of weeks ago. And I was acutely aware of it because I was sitting in the meetings in which it was hashed out. But I, it was, I was so proud of myself for just being able to actually find it and share it with somebody because I will look for stuff on that website. And can't find it. But I like, I knew this one was there because I like said, I was at the meetings. And I even have funny stories related to the hashing out of this ordinance related to street parked cars.
Yeah.
And I was like, oh, I know it's there. I, it has to be there because I literally watched it. I could even look up the notes. That's what helped me, I think, is I could look up the date that was passed so I could like nail down specific. Well, I had the order, that's, I had the ordinance number. That's why I could look it up. I had the ordinance number in notes.
But without that, you have to read through everything. Under a category that doesn't even belong to it.
It's been a battle for me.
Yeah.
And I, sometimes I feel a little embarrassed because I'll call up the building inspector.
Yeah.
Say, hey.
Yeah.
Where's this at?
Yeah.
Oh, we got that right.
I was reading through it today.
Getting all this together, you know what? We we're going to try to get it to where it's easier. It's like if the rec said it last night. If you need something, an ordinance on fencing, you can just do fencing and it'll all be there. It's not like that right now. It's just, it's it's all over the place. And like you said, the first time you punch in something that comes up two thousand and twelve, the very first time I punched in an ordinance, it came up in two thousand and twelve. What I, and it's not what I was looking for, you know, it's, so I feel like, I feel like that's huge and that's really what needs to.
Well, and and if you go to the the fire department's page, it still has Chief Boatwright on there as the main picture.
Well, they're proud of him.
And he's a great guy and they should be proud of him.
But he's.
Needs, he's retired. That that should be within the first week of a new person promoted because if you're online wanting to look something up, I call, hey, I need to speak to Chief Boatwright.
I- if you, um, oh, the the John Phillips sign took a dive. If you in the car business, if you hire a new car salesman, what do you do? And you put them on the website.
And I put them on the website.
You take a picture of them, you put them on the website. You don't want them calling the old sales manager up because he's not there anymore.
Nope, takes five minutes.
He fix it.
Hopefully I'll be changed tonight.
Well, I might, I hope so.
Well, I, I will say that I was on the city website myself. I I'm, I'm a victim. I'm like Washington DC taxed without representation. I have city water and city sewer with no representation on the council. So I, that's why I have these meetings. Uh, have you all come in so that I can know some council people when it comes time to meet, having a problem. Uh, but I tried to pay my water bill. Went onto the city website and they changed it and I can't log in.
Horrible.
It's gone. All the water bills are gone. You can't pull up a copy of it, your username and password, whatever. You need this number, document number, contract book. I don't know what it was. I sent, I filled out the form. It said, oh yeah, William, yeah, I never got an email.
Took me twenty five minutes to pay my water bill the other day.
No clue. So I finally had to wait on the thing to come in the mail and hope I paid it on time. So I'm going to, at some point, I'm going to get a late charge or I'm going to forget. Because I'm waiting on the paperwork to come in the mail. Uh, and then I'm going to have to move because it'll be embarrassing.
That's what I was thinking the whole time. I'm just like, man, they're going to tell me I got a late water bill and can't run now.
All right. Uh, we're at the point in the show where we normally do final thoughts. This is where uh, uh, you raised money, Mike. I know it's a big power broker thing being the the, you know, the returning uh, council person. So you probably have a big war chest fundraiser dinners, door to door knocking, you know, the, this is, this is the kingmaker stuff. There's not a campaign to get involved with. Well, what do you want to plug? Anything?
Uh, just that I'm always available. Call me. If you can get on the city website, you'll be able to see that my number is posted and just, uh, you know.
And it's the real number.
It's the real number.
All right.
It's the real number.
We appreciate you coming and hanging out with us.
Appreciate you letting me come. I really do. I do just want to put a in of one plug. Zach ran the sound last night getting everything up for the uh.
I got the V, I couldn't get any sound.
Well.
I have no idea.
That's okay. Yeah, I know.
I tried.
It wasn't a tone.
But anyway, I'll put a plug in for Mr. Aaron Dickin. He has mentioned about getting a tech person from the high school.
Yes.
To start doing our uh, live streaming it.
It'd be great.
And we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna pay some money. The council is using our riverboat. And I think it'll be good.
It will be.
So I just wanted to throw that out.
Keep gambling. It pays for the internet.
Yeah.
All right. Zach, you got any final thoughts for us?
Um, I mean, one thing I'll mention because they're they're asking about things for Newcastle. I know last night that they approved money for a wayfinding study. Which I think will be huge for not only downtown, but for the businesses that are not downtown. And it's basically updating the signage in and around town to direct you to different places. Like if you're driving up Broad Street, you don't know that the Press Coffee Company is right there, a couple of blocks off. But I think that could be a great way to, if people are downtown. They could see signs that tell you that like, oh, hey, turn this way and Jack's Donuts is down this way.
Do you think, do you think we could work in our, my my idea for a sign that I shared with you in Dakota?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, potentially.
Dakota, so do you remember this conversation, Dakota?
I think so.
US thirty sixth literally runs along the fortieth parallel. So the longitude and latitude line. You, we could put up these signs in Henry County and it would be outside the city limits just a little bit, but. Put up these signs that say you are now entering, crossing over the fortieth parallel, uh, which is.
Forty, looking at forty four point four 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 percent of the way to the North Pole.
Yeah, because the forty fifth parallel is halfway. So you'd be forty four point four four whatever percent of the way there.
Said you had to put as many decimal points as possible.
Which means almost nothing, but I think, I do think it would be a tourist sign where you have, it would literally be like you turn off of State Road three to go to Summit Lake. You put the sign right there. Drop it right there and you have people taking these, it would be, it would go viral.
Okay, first of all, NDOT would never allow this.
No, it's, we put it on a county road.
So we could say this, no, but it would be super funny since I think it would, I think it'd roll out fours as long as you could do the decimal points. So you just paint it on the thirty sixth bridge under, like that goes over three and have it just be forty four point four four. And have it go the entire length of the overpass to the north and just at the very end and like little text to the North Pole.
I do think it would be a destination for people to come see.
That's exactly the kind of entertainment value that I think like, that's tongue in cheek. That's fun stuff and like. I mean, if Anderson could have the Uranus Fudge Factory, the weekend state claim to the forty four point four 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 percent, you know, the fortieth parallel.
The perfect, it's the perfect latitude. It's it's temperate.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right.
You ever get the county in here? Maybe we can get the county to.
Maybe get the county to pay for it. I mean, honestly, I think we could probably pay for the signs ourselves. We just need to have somebody not tear them out. Uh, it's going to be a gorilla.
I don't even know. It's actually better as a gorilla effort, probably than actually trying to get it sanctioned.
But I agree with Zach. I think the signage is good. I was in Canada, I was in Canada a couple of weeks ago and I hadn't been up there. I was up up there in two thousand eighteen.
How was your French?
Oh, it's horrible. I can do that.
Yeah.
But they have real good signage.
Yeah.
They have a real good signage when you're in, you know, I stayed in Waterloo and uh.
That's in Iowa, Mike.
There's signage.
I mean, even if if you go into um.
But I I see it where I travel other places too, you know.
I mean, if you're in Hancock County, I've, it's useless, but I find it interesting that when you pass into school systems, there's a sign. This is you're now entering like Eastern Hancock School District and like, it's a nice looking sign. And then if you pass through. I don't know, is Mount Vernon in that county too? Like you're now entering, and it's got the school mascot and everything.
When you get here, you know, you're entering the Newcastle Drinking Water Protection Area.
Yeah, but I mean, like, but even those kinds of signs lets you know, like, so if you were driving, you're like, oh, I'm getting near the school. Like if you're going to that school for an event, you would know. And but I was thinking, you could then have the signage kind of based out of downtown. But then have it direct people to all the various things that aren't downtown and have the downtown can become a hub. But the good signage could then direct people to different areas.
And that will bring people back to the west side if we did it that way.
Because there is, I mean, like, I mean, I joke. It's not.
Right. I think it has to encompass the whole.
Yeah.
Who's, whose ward is Jack's Donuts?
Uh, that would be Mr. Aaron.
Yeah.
Oh, he's Aaron Dick. I I joked that that intersection, it's not near anything. Like it's not near three, it's not near broad. I joke, it's like the happiest intersection in this, in the county because there's a Pizza King, Jack's Donuts and a Dairy King. Well, depends on your age. Over twenty one, go in a liquor store, but they're all at the same intersections. That's, I mean, that is a hub of activity right there during different times of the day. So yeah, so the wayfinding study I I found was something that could be interesting. It's something the city had already put aside like fifteen and then added ten. Or ten and out of fifteen, but they've set aside like twenty five thousand dollars for that study to get some signs up.
Right.
All right. Any other final thoughts for me?
No. Fall break's coming up. Cross country is exhausting. Um, so everybody go out and enjoy the weather. It's about to. It feels like summer today, but it's going to be, it's got thirties over the, over the weekend. So.
It's going to be campfire weather this weekend.
Yeah.
I like that.
Camping?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Five weekends in a row. Yep. I think that's the current plan. All right. Uh, Mr. Phillips, final thoughts? You know how it works.
I do know how it works. I I just, I I would like everybody to come out and vote on November seventh.
Yes.
We had a roughly a ten percent turnout the last one. We need a lot more than that. But definitely come out and vote. If you've got any questions, I don't know how this is. My cell phone, I will give it out. It's seven six five, seven three zero four zero six two. Any questions, whether you're in my ward or not. Just like uh, Mike said, call me. If you just want to pick my brain and see where my my stance is on stuff, call me. I'll tell you if I don't have an answer because I don't want to speak wrong and say the wrong things until I'm fully informed or or I'm able to. I think a lot of stuff gets said too quickly before it's looked into. But uh, I also fundraising, if you would like to donate to the, to to the election, it's uh, Phillips for Newcastle. Uh, Venmo. Um, so if you're interested in that or signs or shirts, I have those as well. There's my plug for the, for the evening.
Still doing some door to door?
Still doing some door to door. I'm going to do a lot more, probably be Sunday. I was trying to get out today and I had uh, wifely duties that I was, had to do today.
Very good. Dakota Davis.
Just, thanks for coming on.
Thanks for having us.
Try to get all the candidates on. Um, you know, it's a. I we always talk about how much work it is to run a campaign and I know you're a busy guy already, so it's.
It's a lot more than what I expected, to be honest. I'm very glad I did it. Um, it's been very eye opening, to say the least. That uh, you think it's going to be all dandelions and butterflies and it's not, but uh, it 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 will be worth it. And hopefully I I can win and and um, be able to help people out um, when they come to me. So that's what my goal is.
All right. Uh, special thanks once again to the candidate series sponsors, Wyland's Flowers and Slick Pickle Sanitation. Very much appreciate their their continued support. Uh, we will continue the candidate series next week, but a special thanks to both of these guys for being here. And uh, volunteering to uh, to go through uh, the process to give people the choice in the election. Uh, particularly John and you know, you're in a contested race. Um, last year, Mike was, Mike was one of the two contested races in the entire city council. We had, we had a city council election with, you know, with.
Yeah.
Literally dozens of people decided what happened in this town.
And that's, this is the first year we've got almost a full, full ballot. So I'm hoping that's going to bring some people out. Uh, but it goes back to people, there's an election this year. With us not having a primary, there wasn't anything to set off.
Right.
The general election. Usually you have a primary. Okay, I know I've got another election coming up or the primaries coming up.
Well, the yard signs are out in full force now. I think there, people are going to realize there's a hell of a lot of houses for sale or there's an election coming up in November, one or the other.
And definitely if you want to sign, contact me because I've got a bunch more. I'd like to see them all gone.
That's what I do when I'm driving down the road. I'm thinking, is that a house for sale?
All right, awesome. Thank you guys so much. We will see you next week.